Very exciting that we are in the last meeting of April. I don't know how we got here. But we are in our last meeting of April. The calendar is up on the overhead. And are there any additions or subtractions from that? The library gala is the next, is that the next page?
It's this Saturday.
It's this Saturday. Yes, I'm gonna go as well. Yes, there's a labor, it's not a, it's a mingle. It used to be the mid, it used to be a gala, then it became a midwinter mingle and now it's a...
Mingle at Potterham.
Mingle at Potterham. It's that Saturday. Okay, any other things? I'll draw everyone's attention as always to the Brookline Education Foundation celebrating teachers events on May 17th. There are two other additions that we can add to this. Hot off the presses, Mr. Lummis, the ninth, there's a meeting on the ninth school, the evening of May 18th. Seven to eight thirty in the Pierce Auditorium. And that just got scheduled yesterday. It's sort of a community update. May 18th, seven to eight thirty, Pierce Auditorium. Update on the ninth school process.
At what?
In the evening. And then there will be, the date is not a hundred percent finalized, but it's getting finalized. There will be a meeting in the beginning of June with an update on the high school process and the work that's happened since January on the high school process. Do you have that date handy?
Yes. Monday, June 13th.
Monday, June 13th.
Seven PM.
Seven PM. Which just got decided on about two hours ago. Also hot off the presses. Anything else that anybody wants to add? There is an election next week on Tuesday. This is the first time in thirteen years I learned that there are no contested races, no contested townwide races.
It was in this morning's paper.
Oh.
Our town clerk is bummed.
Our town clerk is bummed.
He says, we go to all this work, hire people, train them up for the election and everything and then it's just like...
We do, well, you know, citizen involvement requires involved citizens. Anything else? All right. It's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
There are contested races.
There are contested town meeting races.
Five precincts.
Which is in five, in five precincts, okay. Which is not something we're gonna talk about tonight. Okay, consent agenda. We have two past records. Do I have a motion? Ms. Ram, seconded by Dr. Jackson perhaps, all those in favor? Oh, you're abstaining. Oh, then you can't actually move it. I was just trying to be cute. Sorry about that. All right, Ms. Stone. You have abstained on April 14th, so then...
And so do I.
Good grief. All right, hang on, hang on, one second. We need, then we need Michael's, oh no, abstentions count. How many are abstaining? One, two, three, four? I understand, but I'm trying to figure out if I can do them together. I can't. Okay, so we'll do, we'll separate them. So, March 10th. Ms. Charlopski was here. Who's moving it? Dr. Jackson second? All right, March 10th, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, were you here? Seven, and one abstention. Thank you. Seven, zero, one. April 14th. Thank you, Dr. Jackson second. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, so five, zero, three. All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Subcommittee and liaison reports, Ms. Ram, knowing that we will have a report later, but subcommittee report for now.
We'll discuss the third quarter report later, just a brief update on the budget which we passed in the last meeting. We've been working on the overall narrative which is close to done and you should all be seeing a revised and final version of that no later than next week.
Excellent. Questions? Okay, capital, Mr. Pollack.
The capital subcommittee meets next week, but all of our various projects are moving along. The, let's see, the committee of seven convened on yesterday, yesterday, was that yesterday that we met? Yesterday evening? Yesterday evening and reviewed the five qualifications books that were really, I thought, quite impressive from the, the, the school architects and their teams and decided to proceed with interviewing two of the five. And those interviews are hopefully being scheduled by the building, building department and for soon, for a week from May 9th, yes, a week from Monday. And then we will be able to move forward with the further study in pursuit of identifying a site for the ninth school. And we made announcements earlier about the public updates on May 18th on the ninth school and June 13th on the high school project. And devotion school project is coming and they're doing things in the building now and getting ready to, to do all of that and, and the, the early bid packages are out and they're waiting to, waiting to get the actual real bids that'll represent twenty, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent of the total construction value of the project which will get bought out, bid and bought out right now, very shortly. We will be meeting, I think, on, well, that's the devotion school building committee, but the, but the school committee will be meeting on June 7th, hopefully to vote a change order to fund that construction, that, that early construction package.
And we'll have a quorum? All right, Ms. Coyne is still waiting to hear, so if you have not responded to Ms. Coyne, she needs to hear back from everybody to make sure we will have a quorum on June...
June 7th.
Just, just a small correction. I think the June 7th meeting will be to vote and sign the contract because we will have bids by then, on June 7th. So...
It's a cha, it's a change order with Shawmut, that technically is to vote and sign a change order. But it's a contract, whatever, it's, it's, no, it's, we have a contract with Shawmut. For, the contract with Shawmut so far is for the, the pre-construction services on a monthly basis that they've been being paid for the work that they've been doing now. That's the amount in the contract. And then this will be for the early bid packages and each thing will be added by change order technically.
Also on June 7th we'll have an update with the Board of Sluckmen, so people do have to come even if they don't want to sign a contract. Please, you won't be here. Okay.
And I simply don't know, I have...
You don't know?
I don't know yet and I won't, I won't know for a while.
Okay, we were, we were struggling to find a date with the Board, a joint meeting with the Board of Sluckmen before the end of the year on the ninth school study, so... All right, we shall soldier on and do our best to prepare people in advance and debrief them afterwards. Okay. Curriculum, Ms. Charlopski.
Yes, so today, just before this meeting, we had the devotion school improvement plan. And actually it was a very interesting and I'd even say exciting meeting in terms of their presentation, what the, things that the three principals are trying to do to maintain the cohesion between the two schools. There were a lot of events and things that they're trying to do in both schools, bringing the faculty together, bringing the kids together in ways and having their regular events that they have throughout the year. So that was part of the presentation. The other part had to do with the project-based learning that they're doing there in many of the grades, mostly in the upper school, but a little bit in the lower school. And it gave a lot of us, I think, food for thought about, you know, where, where, where we may need to be spending some more monies at some point and, and time. It just was, it was a very exciting presentation, so, and it'll be in the minutes, most of the information, if anybody else wants to add anything to that. And it, next week, on the fifth, fifth, yes, and the, hmm, it's not Driscoll, it's the high school next week. Yeah, next week the high school will be presenting for the hour from five till six, or four forty-five, I think we, I think we left it at four forty-five because a number of the high school curriculum coordinators will be coming to talk about some specific programs and Deb has a lot to share with us too. So I hope that people can make it. We had a great turnout today and I hope that people will continue to come next week. And then we have a, just the last piece on... Excuse me, just a second. On May 25th, we will have our last curriculum subcommittee meeting of the year and at that one Jennifer will be preparing a sort of, I've been calling it the State of the Union, so to speak, of, of where we're at in terms of curriculum, in terms of the different areas and sort of where some of the places where we're moving forward, where, where, where things are ready to launch or to go forward for next year. And so I think that should be a very good document for us to have in preparation for the new deputy superintendent for teaching and learning. That's it?
Okay. Moving on, government relations, Ms. Stone.
I, thank you, Madam Chair. Government relations piggybacked on the policy subcommittee to, to hold a public hearing on warrant article fourteen, which is the warrant article to asking the town of Brookline to adopt and implement the earned sick time law that was passed by the legislature. That law is subject to municipal approval for it to be enforceable in each municipality. The article fourteen is a repeat of last November's article seven to see if the town will adopt and enforce the earned sick time law. I believe you all received a copy of that warrant article from Ms. Coyne. Article seven was defeated at town meeting last November in part because of assurances from the town and the schools that in the town's case they would implement a new policy la, their new policy on sick time last fall and in the school's case that we would act expeditiously to reform our sick leave policy and extend it in particular to our long-term substitutes who are typically hired for us at least thirty days at a time. I hope Ms. Dunn, I got that right. I appreciate that the petitioners resubmitted this article to hold us to that promise and I believe we have met it. So I think, although I wasn't here, I think Dr. Jackson explained at the last school committee meeting that the policy subcommittee held a public hearing on the warrant article as part of its consideration of the new policy on earned sick time that is being presented tonight for second reading, so you all have had a chance to discuss it at first reading. One of the two petitioners of the warrant article, Cornelia Vanderzeel, was at our, our public hearing and we had a good exchange on various issues and questions that she had. So just to recap quickly on the substance of the article, while we support the idea of earned sick time for less than half-time temporary and certified seasonal employees, we also want to exempt certain positions from this coverage. For example, stipendary positions such as coaches who are not also employed as staff and therefore covered as staff, student interns who work in our school offices, and regular substitute teachers who, as you all know, are called in sporadically to cover for a teacher who is out for just a day or two at a time. Adoption of the law would require us to cover all of those positions with sick leave time and accumulated sick time, which is not really what the law intends and is administratively for us almost impossible to do, to track people that we do not have ongoing contracts with, to track their time and to accumulate sick time. So the new policy with those exemptions in place for us is both workable and fair and I believe and the policy subcommittee also believed was responsive to the intent of the earned sick time law. Earlier this week, Mary Ellen Dunn and I also attended the advisory personnel subcommittee's public hearing on the warrant article and answered various questions about our policy, its timing and its coverage. What's most important, what, what they really focused on and what's most important to understand about the policy is that our policy is modeled on the town's policy. It's almost identical, including the calculation, how sick leave would be calculated and also that, that some personal time is covered. That was an important provision for the petitioners of the warrant article and important for a number of the advisory committee members. So that's all clearly the same. The exemptions obviously are specific, in our policy, are specific to the schools, the exemptions, any exemptions, and I actually don't know on the town side whether there are, but our exemptions are specific to our personnel. So after the here, the advisory personnel subcommittee hearing, they voted to recommend no action on the warrant article by a vote of three to nothing. And the full advisory committee is meeting in ten minutes downstairs to consider warrant article fourteen. They would love to hear whether or not we have, we have voted by then. As the policy review subcommittee voted, I, and brought, brings to you, I believe the, the school committee should continue to recommend a vote of no action should this warrant article be put forward at town meeting as we did last November because our policy meets the intent of the law without exposing us to administrative processes and costs that are unnecessarily burdensome. So with that, I move that the school committee recommend the town meeting vote no action on article fourteen.
No motion, who has a second? Second, Dr. Jackson. Any further discussion on this topic? We've discussed it in multiple venues before, so there might not be anything new to say. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of no action, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you for bringing us through this again. Thank you, Ms. Dunn, for your, your work on this as well. Who is going to go communicate this to?
No, they didn't want to hear whether we passed the policy.
Oh, the policy, okay, okay, got it, great. All right, Dr. Jackson. Anything else on government relations? There was an MAS C Day on the Hill apparently this week. I did not attend.
I, I don't believe anybody from this committee attended, but there are two pieces of legislation amendments to the budget that are, I believe are being put forward that have to do with our ongoing conversation around tracking the impact on districts of mandates. And Glenn Kuchar had circulated those, so those of you who subscribe to the MAS C listserv should be able to see them. I can also get the information if anybody is interested. But MAS C is pursuing those and said that that was gonna be a focus of the Day on the Hill lobbying.
Great. Important. Okay, Dr. Jackson.
Okay, so since we just finished the warrant article on earned sick time, we should do the policy on earned sick time. As you might recall and you have materials in front of you, if you don't, we went through the earned sick time policy as put forth by the policy subcommittee crafted with the support of Elaine O'Sullivan in response to the warrant article. Very specifically last time when we met, we pointed out some of the changes that had been made to make some clarifications. One in particular that, that was made since the last, since the first reading is trying to confirm in the first paragraph who this applies to and who it doesn't. So you'll see that we go to some lengths to point out that this policy does not apply to student interns, co-op students, per diem substitutes and individuals receiving a stipend. And thank you Elaine for the definition of long-term. Long-term substitutes as defined in six oh three CMR seven point oh two, as those working in excess of ninety days and required to be licensed for the role or working under a hardship waiver are covered by this policy. So that was the one modification that we got coming out of first reading that we committed to make. And so I'm excited to put this forth and have it be voted upon hopefully today. But happy to take questions or comments.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All right, we have a second discussion on the policy.
So I just had a, a question for Ms. Dunn, just on whether or not this policy had any financial implications different from current practice that we should be aware of and planning for.
The financial implications are the per diem sub that would be hired to sub for the long-term sub. The long-term subs currently do not receive any sick time if they're here for more than ninety days, a hundred and eighty days and they're not on a one-year contract for, as a teacher. So that would be an increased cost. Implementing the full intent of the statute would be an incred, uncalculated, incalculable cost, both from an administrative support standpoint and tracking, but also in terms of the paying for a sub for a sub in a sick day. A sick, you know, because the sub's out, we're gonna take a sick day, pay for that sub plus the sub to cover the sub for the sick day, which gets like a bad do loop very quickly. Okay? Turtles all the way down. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we might be ready for a vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you for all of the shepherding that has gone through this one. I know it was important. There have been multiple conversations. Ms. Dunn, would you be willing to go downstairs and let Janet know that we have voted? Thank you.
And so I ask that you not, that, that you not deter me in meeting my goal this year of passing three policies, which really was all I was going for, and if you pass this next one, we made it, so don't mess this up. Just saying. So the next policy we're gonna talk about and that we're bringing for a second reading is the restraint policy, the physical restraint policy. We had a first reading on this policy and went through it with everyone. The changes that I think remained, it had to do with the prone restraint. We shared with you the decision to prohibit prone restraint across the board and to allow for timeouts, but only in certain circumstances and not, not as a regular practice. And so you'll see that listed here, so the section that says types of physical restraints with specific additional limitations, right? It now currently says that's only true for timeouts and prone restraints were moved to be in the prohibited types of physical restraint section. We did also make the change that, we got some feedback from the community and from CPAC on two issues. One having to do with allowing the principal to designate, to determine if a restraint needed to go for more than twenty minutes. Our policy had it stated that the principal could make that decision. It was asked that because if that person is not available, and with many of our policies we allow the principal to designate somebody to make that call if it's necessary, we confirmed that legally that is fine to do. Sometimes the law doesn't allow you to have such a designation. In this case, we are still in compliance with the state regulations to allow for the designate, so that's now in here. The other thing that we did was made a modification to the time it takes for contact to be made orally to notify a parent should a restraint occur. Originally the policy stated that the schools had twenty-four hours in which to notify the parent orally, followed by then written notification. We changed that language on page three to indicate that oral notification of a parent of the use of restraint on a student as soon as possible, but no later than twenty-four hours, just speaking to the urgency and the importance of reaching out to families and/or parents as soon as something like this happens at a given school. So those are the changes we've made since our first reading and I make a motion to move it to vote. If any of you have questions?
Same motion and seconded by Ms. Dunn. Discussion, yes, Ms. Gotta.
I'll start out by saying I'm not opposed to this. I'm gonna vote against it. You know, but, but I, I just, I wanted to just point out a couple of things. First of all, there is a whole section here on written procedures. Have those procedures been written already? So they are already written?
The committee reviewed the version of those at the time that we first, they were actually written at the time that we started the conversation, so we had already had them. And if you'll remember, we passed the policy as an interim in the, in December in order to be in compliance with the law and the procedures were written at that time, so we've made modifications since then per this, yeah.
I, I noticed because it was a procedure, among other things, because it was a procedure for or, for orally notifying the parent. And I thought, what is that? Pick up the phone, dial the number, you know? It seemed to me that there was a lot of stuff in here that could be made smaller. But I also, I also noted, and again, this is just, this is not about the procedure, but just in general, that if you look at training, every year, this, all, all school staff has to receive training. Now, if you've taught there for ten years and the training is the same, it seems to me that there's an example of, you know, people have to get together, they have to use time. It could be used for other things, to be trained in something they already know. There are occasions when procedures change. That's a different story. And they're also forming a, what was it, a, a school-wide restraint team to ensure proper administration. Do we really need a school-wide restraint team or do we in fact need someone who is in charge of that? Because if you have a restraint team that has to report out and then everything once a year has to be reported to the school committee, we continue to add procedures in here that take people's time and perhaps time could be well spent.
So before I turn it to Dr. Schmuckler who will speak more to the training and to the team, I just wanna say that with many of the policies that we work on, we are required by law to include a variety of components and procedures frankly to policy. We try very hard to keep our policies and our procedures separate. This is one of those instances, and there have been others, where procedures sneak into policy in part because the law requires it or the regulations require it, so I just wanna lay that as the groundwork and then I wanna...
And that's actually why I raised it because it's another example of the state setting something out that towns have to follow that may or may not be, I'm not saying that this isn't useful in part, but do you really need teachers who have been teaching for five or ten years to be retrained every year to do this?
One other comment I'll make and then I'll turn it to Dr. Schmuckler. This policy along with some of the ones we've done in the past around things like discipline come from an intention to ensure that abuse of policies and strict sort of following of policies happen. And oftentimes policies like these arise because in part we have allowed there to be too much time before people are either brought up to date and/or regularly trained. So while I completely agree with you and appreciate the burden that this puts, and this is one of the ones that is certainly burdensome in that regard as was discipline, I do think the intent is to ensure that restraints, particularly because they are, they, they're quite serious things to engage in, are done well and by qualified staff, but, but I appreciate your point. Dr. Schmuckler, you wanna jump in?
So the, the requirements for training are quite different for all staff. So there's a requirement for an orientation that happens for all people actually working in a building. It's not just teachers and that happens at the beginning of the year. And that's part of the mandated orientation that all staff get, new and on all things, ethics, confidentiality, understanding the restraint regulations, so as well as other things, understanding bullying. So that's the orientation. It is only a very small group of staff, so each school building has a crisis response team. It's not a restraint team because the goal is actually to not restrain. It's not a restraint team, because the goal is actually to not restrain. And those people are trained, and it's an extensive training and it's a certification. We have a train-the-trainer model and people have to keep up their certifications and that training happens, your certification lasts for, for two years. And so, and that's a small group. Generally, in each building, it's probably between six and ten people who receive the QBS training. And only those people are actually allowed to do a restraint in terms of students. So, for example, so for other people working, for example, in our RISE program, we train our paraprofessionals, but they don't get the certification. But they do get the training and we do think, for example, in our specialized programs, that should be done every year. But it's not, the extensive training is not all teachers and all staff. So it is a tiered system. But it is, you know, and I think for good reason, in terms of the actual restraint, it's more about prevention and response. And that is a fairly detailed, thorough training that a core group of people in, in each school goes through.
Thank you, that makes a great deal of sense. It's the way it's written, it says all school staff.
The all-school staff are oriented every year?
Well, if we, I'm not suggesting we change it at this point, but if it just said, instead of said received training, received orientation, it would make more sense. But it's neither here nor there.
Good, any other questions or comments? Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, we're finished with the discussion. All those in favor? Alright, it's unanimous. Thank you Dr. Jackson for meeting your goal. Thank you Dr. Schmuckler for your invaluable assistance. Thank you to CPAC and to all the other people who gave us feedback, very thoughtful feedback, detailed feedback on various iterations of this. Who came to our subcommittee meetings and went through different ways to wrestle through this and get to the right place. So, so thank you for all those who participated. Anything else, Dr. Jackson? An upcoming meeting that you wanna tell us about? No. There's one on the calendar.
Well, oh yes, the next one, that one is scheduled, sorry, I thought you meant my, my pending other meeting. There's one, I think it's May twelfth, if I have the date right.
May twelfth, that's eight-thirty in the morning.
Memory. That meeting will be dedicated to a review of, I believe, Mary Ellen will tell me if I'm wrong, three financial policies that we visited back in the fall that we hope to bring to review to committee before the end of the year.
And I would recommend to anybody who was at the last finance committee meeting, these are the ones that were referenced at that time that had been moved from the finance committee into policy. So if you were at the finance committee meeting and you were wondering what happened to it and you cannot wait to express your thoughts, please join the policy committee on May twelfth to express your- Actually, they are important ones. I'm, I'm, I'm making light of it because I was on a write-out last night, but they actually are very important. It's fees, remind me what they are. Student assistance, fees, fees. And financial assistance.
Meal charge.
And the meal charge policy. They're actually, then they do affect, you know, all, all of our kids, so they're, they are very important. And thank you Ms. Dunn for bringing your fresh eyes to the district and noticing things as we grow. We can't be a mom and pop shop anymore, as we keep reminding ourselves and our former superintendent continued to remind us. So we're excited to be professionalizing some of these things, in addition to everything else that's going on. Any other, okay, additional liaisons? Ms. Tralowski?
Let's be very quick. There was an EDCO meeting this morning. We went over the budget. There's a, they've been able to budget with a minor surplus for next year. And we will be getting, actually Ms. Coin will be getting some information for the amendments to the EDCO policy handbook. Having to do with, one, allowing wealthly to leave EDCO, which they've done, but we have to make it formal. And two, that we, that any community that wants to leave EDCO must inform them July of the year before they plan to leave. So those were the, the two. So if, so that, but they would have time to adjust budgets, et cetera. Also that our fees for this year were being held constant for the most part. I mean, it went up a little bit because we had an increase in population and our fee is, there's a regular fee and then there's the fee that includes also what our population is for each district. It's different. So I think we budgeted the correct amount for next year. It's a couple hundred dollars difference.
And just as a reminder, there had at one point in time been a discussion about would we, what was our status relative to EDCO? And I think there is a general sense that that decision has been made for next year, is that right?
I think so. I think that this is not the time to, to make a big decision. Also, the, the third piece that wasn't discussed today-
Meaning we're gonna stay? When you did not pretend to make a big decision.
Correct.
Right, meaning that we're gonna stay.
Yes.
Collaborative.
Correct. But the, the last piece is at the last meeting in June, which unfortunately I will not be at, and maybe I'll ask one of you guys to go for me. Or Joe, I mean, sort of, we can figure that out. There will be a presentation of the consultant's report on trying to see if there's any possibility of merging, combining, doing some sort of, um, putting together of three collaboratives. That's EDCO, which we belong to, and CASE, which is, I'm gonna mess up on which communities, but I think it's Concord, Acton, Arlington. Right, CASE collaborative and LAB collaborative. And the question of whether or not this makes sense or not. There will be a report from their consultants and I'm sure a lot of time to discuss it, but it's, it's going to be a big topic, to be continued.
Any other questions? Any other liaisons?
On Monday night, I attended the meeting of, I guess it's the Advisory Board of B A N C E, Brooklyn Adult and Community Education. Amy Martin from the department was there. It was a good update. It was, the meeting was held at twenty-four Webster Place, the new offices, the new office building, which has a acronym, a name for the building. I'm not sure what it is, but one of the, they, they, they're, they're happy there, things are going pretty well. They, they said there were a couple of rough spots in the move from the high school. One was that people are always going to Webster Place looking for them. And instead of Webster, Webster Street instead of Webster Place. So they, they, they came up with this acronym for the building and they're trying to make that stick. And then the other one was just, there's a little bit of, of, they're doing fine with staffing their classes in the evenings over at the high school building versus having their offices over on Webster Place. But they're having a little challenge around fee collection and tracking that. And they sort of have to carry their, their box full of people's checks back and forth and back and forth on a regular basis. And anyway, they, but, but all in all, they settled in over there pretty well. And they're, I think, either already this week or maybe the first of next week, they have a new assistant starting who's gonna take on a big part of the, all of the coordination and scheduling of all the teachers and all the different places where they have classes. Their finances look good, not, they, they had an incredible growth in their contribution to their revolving fund in the previous fiscal year. And they're not gonna do that again and continue, you know, they're not gonna contribute another two hundred thousand or quarter of a million dollars to their revolving fund like they did last year. But, but they're gonna, they expect to be break even, their kid programming is working really well, their vacation week programming, summer programming is, it was a good report.
Perfect. Any other liaisons? Alrighty then, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item. Mr. Khan, student report, always a highlight of our evening.
Yeah, thank you. And if you notice me like glazing over, I'm a little tired. Today was a very exciting day at the high school. It was Day of Dialogue, which is the annual day of assemblies at the GSA. It's been rebranded the Gender Sexuality Alliance. Before it was the gender, the Gay Trans Straight Alliance, and before that was the Gay Straight Alliance. So it's back to being GSA. That they put on, they put it on every year. And it was a really great day. There were five assemblies, two of them were BHS students sharing their stories. And then there were three assemblies, or there were three assemblies of BHS students sharing their stories, one of which was slam poetry. And then there were three assemblies of outside-of-school speakers that all came in. And overall, I think that the student body was really respectful and embraced the day as they have for the past many years. And, and I think it represents how much progress Brooklyn has made for queer students, because just a few years ago, the assembly, the focus was trying to like, like emphasize that it was okay to be gay and stuff. And now the themes are much more nuanced and trying to represent a broader range of experiences, which I think is really great. And then, and there's, so it was a reminder of like all the great things and also it was a reminder of the internal struggles that may students still go through. And which, which, so I think it's always important to be reminded because Brooklyn is like much more supportive than most places in the country, but then there's still places to go. And one place is gender-neutral bathrooms, which I've talked about in the past. And the administration is very much on board with it, but they've run into some structural difficulties because the bathrooms that they decided would work for gender-neutral bathrooms, just spatially, to be ADA compliant and meet school concerns. There were, there's questions of the fees, the, the ability to actually make gender-neutral bathrooms this year. And so I don't, I don't know what ability y'all have to influence that, but since, since people in the school are very much in favor of making gender-neutral bathrooms, if there's things you can do to make it easier, I think that'd be really important. And so I, yeah. And then, in other news, in response to the protests and discussion at Town Hall last week, on which Dr. Conley talked about before break. Work has begun on the Know Your Rights poster, which will make information accessible to students that details what, what, what are the rights of students, which is in the handbook, but a little bit buried. And then also is trying to talk about the channels through which if you don't think your rights are being upheld, you can try and fix it and file for that. And so far, I've heard that there's been like several brief conversations between students and administrators and more to come because it was so recent and there was a break in the middle. And I think it's particularly important for, in these instances, for, for the administration to continue to reach out to students and give more opportunities to share ideas, especially after students have spoken out about how they don't feel that's happening as much. And I think that the Lunch and Learn series that Ms. Holman initiated was a good example of faculty and administration reaching out. I hope more programs like this can be initiated and in like a variety of mediums and times and places, because not, not all the ideas will have to come through different channels. And which will involve creative thinking, but confident that we can do.
Mr. Khan, can I just ask you a question? I, I must have missed it when you were talking. When you say student rights are violated, what rights are we talking about?
There's, there's questions as to if students are treated equally or if not. And I don't, I haven't, I, I don't know specific cases or anything, but there is a, I think there was a general concern that if there were problems, there wouldn't be an accessible way for students to address it. And the idea of the poster is to make it more clear ways that students can fix it.
What the avenues are for reporting anything.
Exactly.
Right, okay, thank you.
This was related to the, the student walk on the high, on Town Hall before vacation. It was a, maybe fifty or seventy-five students had a very, very civil and appropriate demonstration here at Town Hall. And that was one of their issues. And so this is good follow-up.
And then the final thing about our report is that the year's coming to a close, which means many, many different things. And first of all, juniors and seniors are taking AP exams and finals this week, next week, and the week after that, which is always fun. And I don't know, it makes for an interesting school climate. And then, but then non-academic things are also coming to a close, such as dance classes will have their end-of-year performance next-
Progressions.
Yeah, progressions. I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's next week, yeah. And then the, the drama department, they're also putting on several shows. I know that the Student Directive Festival will be coming up soon. And those, it's, I think it's a weekend of plays and it's really fun because these are all obviously directed by students. The actors are students and some of the plays are written by students. So it's really a fabulous weekend of student creativity. And I think what's particularly interesting about it is that students that haven't been involved in acting their whole time at high school often get involved as a second semester senior thing. Because I, I know a lot of people that have never acted, never thought they'd be actors, but it's able to pull in a lot of people from the community. And then in many clubs and organizations around the school, juniors are all often taking on additional responsibilities such as the Sagamore as seniors are beginning to step back. And it's also a time that students are being recognized for things that they've done this year or in past years and is represented in several ways. First of all, Tuesday night was the annual special awards ceremony, where dozens and dozens of students were honored for academic, artistic, and social achievements. And, and I think that's an, an exciting night because there's people that you didn't know were interested in something and they get honored. And, and although one thing that was different this year than years past because of the ongoing negotiations with the contract, is that usually the department heads and teachers will show up and help present the awards. But this year, that didn't happen and to stand in solidarity with the actions that they're taking. And then also last night was the sixth annual Brooklyn Hub Award Ceremony, where dozens more students from BHS were also honored. And once again, it's exciting because there's so many people with, with passions and so much enthusiasm that you get to learn about through these things that, that only happen at the end of the year. And then, I guess, one last thought is, as we're talking about the end of the year, I'll hopefully be graduating in about a month. Not yet. And so one thing I'm wondering is, when do you want the next student representative to start?
Has that person been identified?
Not yet, so.
So not before then?
Obviously, obviously.
At, at your discretion. How about, why don't, why don't we give you that unless anyone has any objection? We will leave it in your capable hands to figure out where and how to sadly, and I guess with excitement also, introduce your successor.
It might be very appropriate for this person, if, if the person's been identified, to attend your last meeting. Be a nice transition and nice to see the two of you together.
Alright, yeah, that'd be great. Alright, thank you.
Questions for Mr. Khan? As the hour wanes, that we can ask him questions.
Not, not a question, but I, three quick comments. One was, others of you may have been, may have gotten an email from our former colleague Abby Cox inviting us to attend the, the next, the, it's not a day, it's an evening, it's a workshop.
What is, is it? You're talking about the World Cafe?
Thank you, the World Cafe. I knew there was a term that I was missing. I, and at least when Abby wrote to me, she said that the World Cafe, as she's been working on it, always called to mind Ethan's voice in her head and the, the wonderful things that he has brought to this committee about race and racism and inclusion and, and true outreach. And I just wanted to share that because I answered in saying I have Ethan's voice in my head frequently because of everything that he's brought to us at the table. So I just wanted to share that. Second, um, I believe that, um, you were one of those honored at the Hub Awards, so I just wanted to, um, say congratulations for that, um, richly deserved. Um, and, um, finally, just a plug for those of you who've known me for a long time will not be surprised to hear that if you like theater at all, you might consider taking in the Student Directed, which is always, um, just full of enormous creativity. And as Ethan said, a lot of kids are, are participating who have not been in the acting, um, classes or the programs. They get dragged into doing these shows by their friends who have written something and, and wanted to put it on. But, um, there's always just such amazing surprises, um, and, uh, and fun to be had to see what the kids have done, especially the ones that they've written themselves. It's always a great time, so, um, just a plug for theater at BHS. So, thanks.
Mr. Chowsky?
And I'll put in a plug for Progressions, actually, too. Because that, every time I've gone, I've just been amazed at what kids can do in terms of dance. It is, we've had this program now for thirty years, I think. It's, it's one of the biggest, if not the biggest, high school dance program, uh, that we should be really proud of. Um, actually, one of the dancers went on to be a prima ballerina in London Ballet. And, uh, so it's, it's really worth going to. It's three nights next week and, um, a lot of fun.
That is, um, one, one comment and a question. First, I continue to, um, be disappointed to hear, um, further instances of, uh, people expressing and exercising their rights, um, to deny students once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, such as, um, participation at award ceremonies and, um, end-of-year trips and, um, that sort of thing. So, very disappointing, but thank you for the update. Um, and on the bathrooms, I read a really beautiful quote, um, last week, um, from somebody who talked about, in a context of gender-neutral bathrooms, saying that, um, it wasn't about the water fountain in the nineteen-sixties, um, and it's not about bathrooms now. Which I thought was a very powerful, um, quote, and it's stuck with me. Um, it wasn't about the water fountains in the sixties, and it's not about the bathrooms now. And so anyway, I appreciate your continuing to bring these issues. I guess my question is sort of, I'm not sure if we have a policy that indicates we should be having single-sex bathrooms or gender-neutral bathrooms or anything, all-gender bathrooms? Um, but sort of an interesting question, where something like that lives and how other districts deal with it. So anyway, if any of our professionals in their journeys around, um, the state, the Commonwealth, um, talk to other peers who are dealing with this in a creative way, I would be very keen to hear more. Um, kind of what's, again, it sort of falls into the category of structural barriers. Um, and I don't quite know what, what options are even available. I mean, you might, Mr. Con.
I'm not, I'm not, like, the most up-to-date on this, but it's not, it's not like a policy issue. It's, it's like a physical space issue. And I, I know that some schools have, I'm not sure if in Massachusetts, but have converted, well, have been like a men's bathroom or a woman's bathroom into just a bathroom anyone can use. Um, and, and then other places have been able to find spaces with, um, like, what might have been a staff bathroom. The problem that, I, I guess what, what makes it more difficult is that we do have, like, single-unit bathrooms, but the reason why they're not accessible to students is that they have a lock on them. And there was a concern of safety for, for students, like, if a student were to harm themselves or someone else. And that's why, um, the, the school decided that there'd have to be a stall inside the bathroom, so there'd be not a locked door, but like, a bathroom stall, but just one of them. And then the issue is that. Exactly, it's, you, you have to be able to turn a wheelchair around. And, but if you have any creative solutions and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm embarrassed that I don't, but I'm kind of keen to hear anyone who might.
Well, no, it just sounds to me like, uh, as, uh, Mr. Con said, it sounds to me like what we, what we, um, came up against is not any resistance to making the change, but, um, actual fiscal, um, ability to, uh, financial ability to implement it. I think that's where it lives in terms of Charlie's. In, in terms of policy, my instinct is to say, as long as we don't have a policy for bidding it, um, that it can be implemented over time. And we should just think about whether or not there is a reason, um, to have a policy actively promoting it.
But also, I mean, so, I'm, I'm intrigued by the notion that it's a physical problem, and that might be a temporary, like, a physical, you know, s- space problem, but that's, that's temporary. I mean, walls move. And so I think there's just a fundamental question of who is this place for? And we ask that in all sorts of other contexts, and it just seems worth asking here as well. Um, so, anyway, I don't quite.
Yeah, the other place it's addressed in policy is in any policies that, um, that reference, uh, inclusion and, and discrimination. There is the state list. I'm not sure what the state's current list is that we tend to, um, use in our policies, but it may be worth reviewing that to make sure that, um, that gender identity is, um, is included in the list of things against which we can't. I think it already is, um, but, but that's the, that's the other place where it comes up in our policies, um, across the board.
I'm fairly sure we worked to include gender identity into the strategic plan, um, a, a number of years back.
I'm pretty sure it's in our, our policies as well, but it's, it's worth checking and making sure that it is.
And I, I, I very much appreciate your point that the physical limitations are temporary. And I guess I just want to clarify, I wasn't saying that this is a problem that can't be fixed. And I think that, um, trying to create, um, non-gender bathrooms by the next school year would be a very feasible and very important goal.
As always, thank you. All right, um, next item, uh, interim superintendent's report, Dr. Connelly.
All right, we have a few updates. Uh, just to remind that our next meeting, which is next Thursday, May fifth, uh, will be the reorganization, uh, meeting for school committee. We'll be appointing the, the chairman, the vice chair, and the reappointing the executive secretary. Uh, and all of you that are up for reelection, to remind you, you must take your oath before next Wednesday, the next Thursday's meeting. Uh, number two, Ben Lummis, at our last meeting, gave us a detailed report on the transition of the, or the conversion from first class to Google. At the time, we weren't sure of the exact date we now are. That exact date for the, uh, transition will be, uh, June eighth. The reason for that, we wanted to give the staff a chance to have support as the conversion takes place, and also a chance to kind of practice it and get, get, uh, familiar with it before the year's out. So, we're gonna give it, give it a, uh, a go, the last couple of weeks of the school year.
Do you have questions as you go?
By all means, yes.
And old emails will or will not be available to individuals under this conversion? I've gotten this question, and I have no idea.
So, uh, first class will remain there for folks to, uh, access and look at their old emails, old files, old folders are there. Um, for example, the, the town which switched over to, away from first look, uh, first class two years ago still has access to first class. So those will stay as a static archive. Um, for a very limited number of people, we will migrate files and folders and emails over to. Either for everyone because of the, the amount of data, the time, the effort.
As, because we probably, we aren't included, I think, in some of the, or are we included in some of the trainings so that we know what to do with our emails that we might want saved and things?
So, a couple of things, is, I can just talk to, um, so Kevin Stokes, Scott Moore and I are sort of leading the transition. I can work with Kevin, uh, please, in this case Kevin, about your email accounts specifically, whether we migrate them over, um, we'll talk about that. In terms of training, we can easily set up a training. We're, we're having lots of trainings, um, first Q and A sessions for staff across the district, and then trainings for staff across the district. Certainly have one for you, for, for the school committee as well, if you're interested. And, uh, all of you, some of you, that sort of thing.
Or maybe just some dates when you're doing the regular training, so you don't have to do a special one?
Sure, yeah. I'll follow up with Rob and Ted or something.
Um, I was just, are, are we all being, I'm sorry, this is such a, a basic question. Are we all being reassigned a Gmail email address?
Sure, so everyone's, um, email will become, will be the same before the at, so ben underscore lummis at psbma.org. But all, all email that continues to be sent to Brookline at K-12 will always forward into the new Gmail or PSB mail accounts.
So, is it PSBMA or is it Gmail?
It's, it's G, it's run by Google.
It's run by Google, but it's not a Gmail address?
No, it's PSBMA.org.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
My, my question refers back to Ms. Charlofsky's. It, um, and, and training. If you are already a Gmail user, my assumption is, other than the email address, the same thing, the same format is what you're using. So there's a, there, you can make labels, you can, so there really, if you're familiar with Gmail, won't be much, um.
In fact, it sounds like you might want to be able to leave the training, it sounds like. About labels and all that, you're, you're well on your way.
Ms. Scotto teaches blended learning classes, which are far more technologically advanced than probably anyone else in this room.
Help us out then, we could use some help.
Probably could, she's our poster child, Ms. Charlofsky.
So, two questions. Will there also be in this a public forum like we have now?
Sure, so that, that's where there's something that are different, because people are familiar, many people are very familiar with Gmail, not familiar with Google Groups. Google, so we'll be transferring conferences or we'll become Google Groups.
That's fine.
Yeah, and so that's where you have a pu- public forum, there'll be a public forum, Google Group. You know, every conference you have now.
And you have to join it then, or are you?
Yeah, some folks will be, I mean.
It's not like you just go onto it and read it.
Uh, it, it happens in different ways, sort of, you know, in the background. Meaning, everyone who is, has access to a, a conference now will have access to the new conference.
Right.
You know, the Google version of that conference. Um, and so we'll be setting those up. Um, right now we have over seven, seven hundred conferences, many of which are not active or not being used. And so we're going through a process now of identifying which ones are active, and we will, uh, most likely recreate those. And then we're also considering whether or not we, uh, make it an option, um, for folks to create new ones on their own, or they have to go through a process to create them. That's what I'm saying. But it'll be, it'll be similarly administered to the way the first cla- class conferences are now, but just a little bit, you know, a different looking feel.
And will there be a connection with the town? So if we write in somebody's name from the town, will, I'm sorry, this is too much.
No, I.
It would be important, I mean.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can, I'll, I'll find out and get back to you on that one.
Okay.
Just so you know, it seems like the, the support and the communication's going quite well. We had a lot of really positive reactions. Uh, many folks are choosing to be early adopters, which means they can switch earl- even earlier than.
You mean, we could do that now, too, if we wanted?
Do that, yep, um. Um, so those folks will go about a week or so before the, the, before the transition period begins. Um, but there's been, um, pretty favorable reaction to just the support and the FAQs, and there's a, uh, Google Conference up that people are asking questions, and, um, so it seems to be going pretty well so far.
That's a great point. Is there, do you have to go to a training, or is there some document that says, here's what you need to know?
There are seven different levels of support, which I can go through now if you like.
Is there a document?
There will be sort of, um, you know, step-by-step instructions for many of the basic functions.
Perfect, as long as we don't have to go to a thing. Now I can't do any more meetings, Ms. Scotto.
The only reason I know about this, because I've been in Greece where email was erratic, is that I, when I came back, I sim- I saw something up that said Google on our Facebook homepage. You're on our first-class homepage. And when you look at it, there are questions and answers about all kinds of things. So I would advise you to look at it and see if your questions are answered.
Exactly.
See? Y'all think I'm kidding, I'm not. I'm not playing, send her out. Okay, excellent, moving on. Well, the good news is, Mr. Lummis, people are so disappointed in the performance of first class that they are probably just so excited and flocking, uh, to your doorstep. Um, I can't wait for you to stop there, probably. As long as it works on iPads, I, I really don't care.
Okay, uh, number three on the, on the report is the, the June seventh date, we already spoke about that earlier. At the time I wrote this, we were undecided, but it now is June seventh. Uh, number four, superintendent of public forums, we had one today. Uh, Lawrence School went very well, well-received, good turnout of parents, and a great dialogue. Very, very positive dialogue. And I, I want to con- con- continue to thank Rebecca and Susan and, uh, Ben and Jennifer for being at these, and Karen, uh, for being at these meetings. It's great to have the support and the audience to ask them those, uh, challenging questions. They have some support to answer them. But, uh, I can't tell you how pleased I am with the tone of these meetings. They're very positive, it's a great dialogue. You really get the sense that people appreciate the, the communication ethic. So that's a great, great idea. Uh, number five, administrative searches, uh, are ongoing. The, uh, Senior Director for Teaching and Learning, the search, uh, is, is over. We have now identified a preferred candidate. We interviewed a total of ten. Uh, we're very excited about the, uh, person that's been now been identified as a preferred candidate. This person had three interviews, and we brought her back, uh, this week to be interviewed by some of the program supervisors and coordinators. Was very well-received, and, uh, we've checked references, they were glowing. And this person is about to notify her current employer that she'll be leaving. And so, uh, I did not get the green light to announce that person's name tonight, but we will next Thursday. Uh, and you'll be very pleased to hear her credentials, that we're lucky to have her. Uh, Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, we had a total of forty-seven applicants. Uh, as you know, we did form the committee. The committee did meet, we did identify the candidates to be interviewed. We're interviewing eight candidates, and, uh, we can interview the first set of candidates tomorrow morning. Uh, and we have two or three, uh, blocks of time next week. Uh, we hope to have the initial interviews completed, uh, by, uh, Wednesday, uh, May eleventh, and then have the finalists interviewed, uh, the weeks of May seventeenth and May twenty-third. So our goal is to have our preferred Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning identified before the month is out, the month of May. Deputy Superintendent for Student Services, that position is still posted. I believe the deadline is, is next Friday, June, uh, it's May sixth. Uh, we've, we've set a meeting, that committee has also been formed, very broad-based, uh, inclusive committee. And, uh, we plan to meet on Mondays, May ninth, to, uh, share the applications and develop the interview dates. Uh, the Lincoln School Principal Search is going very well. Uh, the search committee reviewed forty-seven applications, we identified eight for interviews. With, so far, we've interviewed five of those eight, and we have, uh, three more Monday. We had, actually, we had three this morning. And, uh, uh, we hope to have that resolved by sometime next week. And we'll then do the second round of interviews, and we hope to have, uh, that search completed. Uh, maybe in time for our May sixteenth meeting, so we can announce the candidate. Uh, if not, soon, soon thereafter. But as you know, these search committees involve a great deal of time and effort. Uh, for example, the twelve members of the Lincoln School Search Committee, they, I'm sorry, the, of the, uh, Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning Committee had their forty-seven applications. Uh, they took home over the vacation, and I'm sure spent a great many hours over vacation going through those, so we could identify the eight candidates, uh, to be interviewed. Uh, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the time, effort, and the enthusiasm of these people as they serve in this, on these very important committees. It's going very well. I'll move on. Uh, grade-eight national Spanish exam result. Whenever I get some real good news, I feel it's important to share, not only with the school committee, but with the, with the, the public. So, uh, the following very special email was sent by John Pedini, sixth grade, six-eight world language teacher at Lincoln School, and John Carney, our coordinator of elementary world language program. And the email reads, "This year, twenty-six of our eighth-grade students at Lincoln School participated in the national Spanish exam. The vast majority of these students began Spanish in grade one when our elementary world language program began. Since they began their study in the, uh, elementary grades, they had to compete against a higher caliber pool of students in the state and nationally. The exam consists of four parts, grammar, vocabulary, reading, and listening comprehension. I'm happy to announce that there were eleven perfect scores in vocabulary, vocabulary, section two of the, in the, in the, in, section, in section two in the grammar section, eleven in the reading, and eight in the listening comprehension section. Some students had multiple perfect scores. This resulted in five gold medal winners, four silver medal winners, three bronze medal winners, and four honorable mention awards. As if that is not enough, we also had two state national winners with four perfect scores. Uh, Sorin Yuvard and. Uh, Sorin Yuvar and, uh, Anton Garcia Becca in the bilingual category, the highest level of competition. Anton is the third state winner in the bilingual category from the Lincoln School since the year two thousand and one. These two students will be honored at the Regis, at Regis College on May ninth with a dinner for them and their families where they will accept their award from the ambassador of Spain. This is testimony that our elementary world language program is producing tremendous results. And I'm so, so pleased that Joan and Dawn shared this good news with us. And finally, and as I've done for several weeks now, give the school committee an update on the, uh, kindergarten enrollments. Uh, we're now up to four hundred and ninety-one, uh, compared to roughly five thirty-eight at this time last year. So we are lagging behind, uh, by a little bit. Uh, and, but we've reached a point now where we, we've actually now started working with the buffer zones and trying to balance our enrollments and, uh, at this point, we're, we're doing quite, uh, quite well with balancing the enrollments and assigning the, the children to the, uh, schools of their preference. And we'll do this now two or three more times before we actually announce the assignments of some of these, uh, students. But, uh, that's, I think that was it for the superintendent's report, yes, it is.
Good. Just one, that one in particular will be helpful at some point, it doesn't have to be tonight, but to understand, um, if, um, the devotion renovation project is impacting these numbers, because typically renovation projects, um, do influence our enrollment numbers. Um, and second, um, there's this, I, the notion that the Hancock Village, um, units are being taken offline, um, for renovation and that that, there's sort of a notion out there that that may be affecting numbers also. So it would just be helpful at some point to understand both those in a little more detail.
As I mentioned, we're lagging behind by about forty students and twenty of those are from devotion, so devotion's twenty behind where they were last year.
So from four ninety to five thirty-eight?
That's the total.
Okay, so that's forty-eight students and what did you say, so of the forty-eight?
Right, right now devotion, uh, has seventy-three students registered.
Okay.
And they were twenty more than that a year ago.
Got it, okay, so Devo is twenty of the forty-eight, okay.
And the others are spread?
Pretty much, yeah.
They're spread, okay.
At this point, I'm pleased to say that all eight schools have a margin for additional registrations. We haven't, we haven't reached the max in any school. Our goal is to keep everybody less than twenty-two.
Can you remind us the date that the, everyone gets their final assignment?
Uh, it's May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. And that's for Matco materials fee and buffers, is it, not buffer?
It's, uh, for, uh...
Who's that for?
It's, it's probably the, you see? Buffer, is it buffer?
Materials fee and buffer?
Right.
Okay.
And the nu- the number I just gave, uh, actually, the number did include, uh, the estimated Matco, uh, enrollments, but they have not been assigned yet.
Right, okay. And when do they get provisional assignments?
Help me out, Karen.
I know we talked about this last year, I just don't remember the date.
So, Suzie Talutda is currently, um, assembling packets, um, so once she has that, we then review them and assign accordingly.
Okay, and are we still trying to get them into the peak in practice in ju- in June?
Yes, which is June, right, so that's why we try and look at that May fifteenth date.
Okay. So are we trying to do May fifteenth for all of them, for buffers and materials fee and Mecca?
Correct.
Okay, got it, thanks, that's helpful, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Charlofsky?
Uh, just to be clear, that's all of all the students who have registered?
To date.
To date, but Pete, students who register after May fifteenth or, or June first, what happens then in terms of buffer zone students? Do we wait, at, at one point, we had waited until August, I think, to assign them?
So, so generally, um, certainly in the last two years, those assignments have really sometimes come late into August just in terms of trying to balance the buffers and I think it's going to be more complicated this year. So we'll probably be looking at late July, August in terms of the summer enrollment, so that you have the big picture. We also know in Brookline, we get, uh, a lot of enrollments, um, first two weeks in August and then right through to when school starts. So the later that we do it, the better we have in terms of balancing it.
And devotion is one of those schools that usually get late registrations.
Right, no, I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
I'm just, um, doing the very back of the envelope math, so it, if in fact this is, um, predictive, um, given what we know happens, um, with enrollments in the summer and, and next fall, but given where we were a year ago, um, we could be, we could be looking at a, an incoming class of six hundred rather than six hundred and fifty.
I actually asked that question to Karen and Janice. And they, and they said, between this time last year and the opening of school, I think we, we picked up additional, over a hundred, like a hundred and ten students. And so if you look at that four ninety now and you add, uh, typically another hundred and ten, you're gonna be around around six hundred.
Right.
There were six thirty-three this year, we may dip by thirty. And I'm thinking that might be, uh, a devotion school influenced, uh, dip.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So, might that allow us to have one less kindergarten? If we were to, I mean, I, we wouldn't plan on it now, but...
At six, at six thirty-three this year, we, we were averaging, uh, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two students.
So we're just spread it, okay.
And so actually, if going down to six hundred, if...
Would be a blessing.
But as I've mentioned at the open forums, we probably won't need thirty-one kindergarten classes, an extra one. Thirty will continue to work, in fact, will work better than it did this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Last question, don't, don't we often have the Cavalier Award winners come?
Yes, and I, oh, I, I, I think I skipped over that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're coming the May nineteenth meeting. Did I miss that?
Yes.
Yeah. I wanted, I wanted to announce the names too. Thank you very much. Here it is, okay.
You were so excited about the eighth grade Spanish.
I was, I was, yeah.
You've been talking about it all week.
Uh, just before April break, uh, I had the opportunity to accompany Kathleen Sheehy, the executive director of, uh, the Educational Foundation and Ian Rothman, president of the Brookline Educational Foundation, as they visit the Brookline High School and the devotion school to meet and inform this year's Cavalier Award recipients of their special honor. This year's recipients are Jill Sepfantis, uh, biology teacher at the high school, and Janice Godet, devotion school special education teacher. Both of these deserving educators will receive their award on Tuesday, May seventeenth, at the BEF celebrating teachers event at Newbury College. We will invite both Jill and Janice to be at the May nineteenth school committee meeting. And I have to tell you, it was such a, an pleasure to be part of that presentation. Both teachers were totally surprised, they, their colleagues knew that was, was happening, so they, they had, uh, balloons and, and a little celebratory, uh, celebration planned afterwards, but the teachers were speechless, the kids clapped, the teachers clapped, and it was just a great thing to be part of. And I'm looking forward to this, uh, award ceremony. It's a very nice tradition, you know, in many school systems, uh, unfortunately, they avoid identifying teacher of the year type awards. Uh, and I'm so glad that Brookline, uh, does that, I think, I think it's so appropriate. Because if one person's award is shared by everyone, it's not that individual one, it's a one for the entire school system. It's also, it's, it's a great tradition.
It is, sometimes they even run for school committee, and we are delighted to have them. All right, anyone else, any other questions? Moving on to our third quarter financial report, it is done. I'm sorry, we're a little bit behind, but, but so much news to share.
Um, just a few highlights, uh, from the report. As the report shows, we're currently showing a hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit primarily in our expense lines. Um, we also have exposure of an additional hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, for covering, um, projected deficits in athletics and summer school. And, uh, we are continuing to look at those and, and work with athletics, um, to resolve some collection issues that are ha- that they are having, um, that are impacting that number. Um, in terms of the salary lines, we continue to reserve all of our salary funds, um, pending the results of mediation with our, um, BEU bargaining units. And also that we have, still have three bargaining units that have yet to start, um, negotiation with, with us. And that's the custodians, the secretaries and food service employees as well. Um, and just to remind you, the reason why we have this deficit that we're carrying is, um, my first memo to you in July alerted you to, um, a significant deficit in transportation. One, um, element was for a new contract for regular education transportation and special education transportation. The rates, um, rates increased and there was no increase in the operating budget. The other portion is of our transportation is that the, this year's, um, Devo or upper devotion transportation to Old Lincoln is not covered by the project and has had to be covered by the operating budget. And that's, um, roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, that total of a deficit which was around seven hundred thousand, we're now, based on some offsets from some other accounts, um, is down to a hundred and eighty thousand. So presumably, between now and June, um, as we close the budget, we should be able to make up that last remaining amount. And that's sort of the highlights. Any questions from the committee?
Have any other comments?
Just one thing I want to add is, um, how appreciative I am at the fact that in getting this third quarter report, really nothing was a surprise, that Mary Ellen has done such an amazing job throughout the year and as she's, you know, been onboarding herself, keeping us very well informed and being incredibly transparent. And so, um, I just wanted to express my appreciation for that.
We discussed this at length in the finance committee meeting earlier, we had a couple hours on it. Actually, we had a couple hours a couple times on it, as Mr. Chang is reminding me of. With, 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 um, I don't know, Gusto. Any other comments or thoughts, Dr. Jackson?
I just have a question, um, and you and I have chatted about the athletics challenge, um, based on my personal experience. But one question, I, I guess it's a two-part question, one is, under the assumption that these can be collected as they have been increased, does that fix it, um, in terms of sort of where we are with the deficit? In other words, if they collect the money that is meant to be collected? And then the question, uh, second question is, might we ever move to some sort of point of sale or ability to pay by credit card? Currently, you can only pay by check, um, and so I'm curious whether we've ever considered other options or, um, online systems for payment to, to, to help with that.
Uh, that project started on July fifteenth, when I, so I started that project July fifteenth because, um, there are a number of issues, which is part of why you have the three policies, um, that you have, because those will actually help forward progress, so that we can actually have a, um, online payment system that is parent-friendly, um, as well as district and employee-friendly, um, and really create for us a receivable ledger, because right now, we don't have one. So we have, um, teachers and, and others, uh, charging for fees, but we have no mechanism to actually prove out that, um, those are collected and any number of things, so, um, yes, we will be working on that.
That number is the right number and that we'll be able to...
There's some work with the athletic departments, department in particular, and frankly, all the revolving funds about how they budget. And one of the pieces that, um, should be appearing in the FY eighteen budget is, this report that you have actually doesn't tell you what they're budgeting, what their expenses are, what their staffing is, what their contracts are, and to really have them model the same model as the operating budget and have them planning that way, so that we can actually assess, are we charging appropriately, too much, too little? What are we charging, what's our policy or practice about what we're charging? Is there any number of questions in terms of how does that be generated? And what should we charge? That's an FY eighteen goal.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we will say thank you, we don't need to take action at this point, so I'm gonna say, thank you very much. Um, that is the end of our, um, regularly scheduled programming. We do have, um, a new business item, is there any new business? All right, seeing none, we do have need for an executive session, I believe, yes? Uh, for a purpose, if everyone stands up, it will be short. Um, for a purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Brookline Educators Union, units A B and Perez. Um, Ms. Coin, will you poll the committee? Yes.
Yes.
Yes.